Call this meeting into order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with a roll call.
Hey, Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Albersen.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the council dismiss the absent council member.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, we're gonna start off tonight with a special presentation from T. Schultz.
Thank you. As you tell, it's been a little while since we've been in front of you to give any type of recognition. You can see how by the support in this room. So absolutely awesome. So thank you, Council President, Council members, Mr. Mayor, department members and family, for this opportunity to recognize several of our department members. It's a privilege for me to present these well-deserved honors. The Rent Police Department has always prided itself on service to our community, and the response to the incidents that we're highlighting this evening are in keeping with the highest standards of fulfilling that pledge. So to start with, if I could have Officer Major. Awesome. Just come right up here. Absolutely. So on March 19th, 2021, pardon me? Yeah, you're perfect this way. Sorry, yeah, we should have prefaced that. Several police units responded to a collision. The at-fault driver was unresponsive to attempted verbal contact by the officers. Upon gaining entry to the vehicle, it was obvious that the driver had suffered a significant head injury, which was a result of a self-inflicted gunshot wound. Officer Major, without hesitation, provided emergent trauma care to stop the bleeding and apply pressure until medics could arrive. The patient survived his injuries. Medical staff went on to say that if it had not been for Matt's immediate intervention, the patient would have succumbed to his injuries at the scene. So, Matt, for your exceptional life-saving efforts and the performance of duty, you are hereby conferred the Rent Police Department's Life-Saving Medal. Your efforts confirm your commitment to the safety of our Renton community. So, congratulations. Officer Carstensen. All right, so, on August 9th, 2021, Officer Carstensen responded to an armed barricaded subject actively discharging a firearm from inside a residence toward neighboring houses and first responders. The reporting parties to this were still in the residence with the shooter and frightened to leave. While under fire, Jake and his team acted purposefully to ensure the safe exit of the two hostages, evacuated close by residence, and for over 90 minutes maintained containment of the barricaded suspect until tactical support elements arrived. For your conscious display of extreme courage while under substantial risk to your physical safety beyond the normal demands of police service, you are hereby conferred the Rent Police Department's Medal of Valor. Your extraordinary efforts undoubtedly led to the safety of the two hostages and the insured well-being of the surrounding community. Great work. Officer Tabo.
On April 13th, 2022, Officer Tabo and several officers responded to a call concerning a subject with a firearm at their Metro Park and Ride. After a lengthy standoff where attempts to de-escalate failed, the subject advanced on officers, raising his arm, pointing a pistol at them. The suspect's action forced officers to respond with potentially deadly force, striking the suspect. Officers quickly advanced, started to provide trauma care. Quint assessed the suspect for injuries and located a wound as from oral artery, to which he applied a tourniquet. This did not slow the loss of blood. Being cognizant of the seriousness of the injury, Quint used his fingers to apply direct pressure to the artery inside the wound, significantly slowing the loss of blood. According to the responding medics, if Quint had not provided this emergent care, the subject would have likely succumbed to his injuries prior to advanced life-saving resources arriving on scene. The subject has recovered from his injuries. So for your exceptional life-saving efforts and the performance of duty, you are hereby awarded the Rent Police Department's Life-Saving Medal. Congratulations.
Right. Officer Adam Paget. Thank you, guys. So on June 8th, 2022, Officers Adam and Paget responded to a potentially suicidal subject. A close relative reported to 911 that they had received what they felt was a final goodbye from them. Upon arrival, Dave and Chris did not get an answer at the door, but were granted access by an arriving relative. Soon after they entered the residence, they located the subject, who was unresponsive, hanging from a rope that was wrapped tightly around her neck and tied to a door handle. Dave and Chris immediately went into action, summoned medics, and began to provide care for the subject. Acting in unison, Officer Paget was able to remove the rope from the door handle while Officer Adam cut the rope from the subject's neck, clearing their airway. Dave located a weak pulse and noted the subject's shallow respiration, and both he and Officer Paget monitored the subject's condition until medics arrived. The subject was later transported to the hospital, where they were treated for their physical injuries. Without their response and immediate life-saving acts, the victim would have, within moments, succeeded with their attempt. So for their exceptional life-saving efforts and the performance of duty, they are hereby awarded the Rent Police Department's Life-Saving Medal. Okay. This is a big one. Gina, Elliot, Dennis, Greg, Javier, Jake, Paul. Did I forget someone? Oh, okay, sorry. Like, I hope I didn't. Oh, sorry. I did forget. Yeah, yeah, no, I did. He's on the other page. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, Joe. That's all my fault. That's on me. Yeah. A little smaller print for this one. So, "In the early morning hours of July 23rd, 2022," bet you most of you all remember this, because this was the morning before the Renton River Days Parade and the incident at the musicians' hall. "On-duty police personnel were advised of sounds of illegal discharges coming from the musicians' hall located at 126 Logan Avenue South. All on-duty personnel to include Officer Gina Christensen, Elliot Edmonds, Dennis Moynihan, Joe Wozniowski, Greg Bills, Javier Regosa, Jake Thielman, and Sergeant Paul Summers immediately responded to the scene. As officers were arriving on scene, they were met with active gunfire and saw multiple gunshot-wound victims down in the street. Without hesitation, officers swiftly began to attempt to secure the area and render life-saving efforts to the victims. A total of eight victims with gunshot wounds were located at the scene. Officers quickly began triaging and performing emergent trauma care and life-saving measures. Due to the extreme chaos and hostility of the scene, a call for multi-jurisdiction response was summoned. The crowd of approximately 150 family members and partygoers quickly turned their attention toward the officers and began to assault officers and damaging patrol vehicles as they were attempting to provide CPR and other trauma care to those suffering life-threatening injuries. This did not dissuade the officers, who continued as gunshots rang out in the area, making evacuation of medical response impossible. This went on for almost 20 minutes until victims could be evacuated from the scene. The ensuing investigation reveals there were a total of 11 gunshot-wound victims. There were over 96 shell casings from both handguns and rifles located, along with four guns, many near the areas where officers were providing trauma care to the victims. Two of the victims needed immediate trauma care. The first subject was down on the street and had gunshot wounds to his chest. Officer Moynihan, Edmonds, Christensen, Bills, and Regosa all started emergency life-saving measures, including chest seals, CPR, and the application of an AED. The officers here were under constant assaults from the unruly crowd. They managed to keep a pulse on the subject, providing him the opportunity to receive advanced care by medics. Unfortunately, even with the extraordinary efforts of the officers, he later succumbed to his injuries. Sergeant Summers located the second subject under a truck with an obvious gunshot wound to the pelvic area. Officer Thielman and Sergeant Summers rolled him over and found multiple gunshot wounds to his chest. They removed his clothing as they called for Officer Bills to bring a trauma bag to the location. Officer Bills arrived, applied chest seals, while Sergeant Summers maintained pressure on the lower gunshot wound, as Officer Bills applied additional pressure wrap, maintaining viability until medics arrived. So, for your efforts on the evening, Officer Wozniowski, you are awarded the department's Medal of Valor. Officers Christensen, Edmonds, Moynihan, Bills, Regosa, Thielman, and Sergeant Summers, you are awarded the department's Medal of Valor and the department's Life-Saving Medal. Congratulations. While we're doing this, if I could editorialize a little bit. I mean, I couldn't imagine going into a more chaotic scene, but fortunate, I mean, to have at least Paul with you, and I know Deputy Chief Harden was there too. But I could imagine, if you're going into something like that, at least having the best leadership available to you at the time. Sergeant Summers, give us a speech. Summers?
No.
No. It's also my honor this evening to present three members of our department that will be promoting into new leadership positions. If I could have Scott, Steve, Ryan. As close as you guys can. All right. There we go. Now we're in order. Scott Woodward, immediately to my left. Scott started his employment with the Renton Police Department on August 1st, 2015. Prior to this, he served the community of Colorado Springs for eight years until 2008, when he took the contracting job with the State Department and was stationed in Iraq and South Sudan, where he served as an advisor, leader, and then a commander for law enforcement services. Scott also has a master's degree in diplomacy. As a member of the Renton Police Department, Scott has served on our civil disobedience unit, has been a field training officer, and has acted as an officer in charge. He also volunteers as a peer support officer for other members of the department. Scott has been filling in the sergeant position on an interim basis since October 1st, 2022. Outside of work, Scott's involved in a number of volunteer organizations. Scott is very respected, outstanding leader, mentor for our organization. So in his position as sergeant, Scott will be assigned to the Patrol Operations Division as a sergeant. Congratulations. And then, to his left, Steve Morris started his law enforcement career with the Renton Police Department in 2000, graduating number one academically and number one overall in his academy class. Prior to joining the PD, Steve served his country in the United States Coast Guard for four years until 1998. Upon discharge from the Coast Guard, he was hired by King County, working in the jail until being hired here with Renton. In his time here, Steve has been a patrol officer, field training officer, an officer in charge, a detective in both property and persons crime, has served on the Valley Independent Investigation Team, and has been a patrol sergeant and a sergeant over the Traffic Division. Steve will maintain administrative control in the Traffic Division in his assignment as commander. Congratulations. Then on the far end, Ryan Rutledge. After graduating from Renton High School in 1998, he attended Western Washington University before being hired as an entry-level officer with Renton in 2004. As a patrol officer, Ryan also served as a field training officer. He then transferred to our Special Enforcement Team, where he worked as a detective for eight years until his promotion to sergeant in 2017. As a sergeant, he served as a supervisor in patrol operations in our Special Operations and Admin Services Division. In 2021, Ryan was promoted to commander and has overseen our Administrative Services Division. In that role, he's instrumental in developing our department's peer support program, recruitment and hiring, and communications and engagement. He's completed his master's degree in management and leadership, and in 2022, he graduated from the FBI's National Academy for Law Enforcement Leadership. In his position, Ryan will oversee the support operations of our organization as deputy chief. Congratulations, Ryan. So, yeah, thank you. Congratulations. So that is the end of our presentation this evening. Thank you for your attention. And yeah, would you like to, so everyone, we'll go up to you. All right, ready? One, two, and three. A couple more. Two and three, and one more, please. One, two, and... Thank you. Everyone. So, promotion people out for a sec. Between there.
But I don't want to cover you.
Yep, just look at the screen.
It's kind of, that's your...
It can be my tito's.
Ready? One, two, and three. Again. Two and three, and one more. Thank you.
Can I say something before everybody leaves? I'd like to say something before all the life-saving award people leave. I just want to say something. Literally in my office, I have the printout of everything that the chief read, and I was gonna ask Judith, hey, I need to get all these emails so I can send a congratulatory, you know, email and that sort of thing. So you saved me some time. I didn't know I'd see you. I want to give my personal congratulations and job well done. So you saved me about eight, nine emails. So I just want to say that.
More photo? Okay.
No, I can't. Ready? One, two, and three, and again. One, two, and three, and one more, please. And two. Thank you.
One more. Oh, is there one more? A mask. Yeah.
We're in picture or not.
I don't know if we were really in it or not, but I felt like more of a forced mob.
Maybe we should be out.
I have pictures of my dad when he graduated ROTC, when he was...
I mean, the photo, no matter what.
Military police. I pictured me like this, where the German cacher colored an eye.
So, the photo?
Taken in front of the 10s.
It's nice to see their families and everything. It'd be nice. Are you limping?
That's a strut. I'm sorry.
Can you help him with the photo? To take the photo so all of them can be in the photo? It's the alcalde. It's the alcalde. He's the alcalde. Sí, él es el alcalde.
There you go.
Is that better?
Sí, sí, sí.
Thank you.
One, two, three, when I take a few.
Gracias. Congratulations. Javier, chasdrisidades, eh? Claro, ya lo sé.
What happened to everybody? We don't get to... That's good that they have a reception, because I was like...
A photo session is over now. So, lesson learned. I guess if you're gonna say something, say something before the pictures, right? All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, if we could just bring everybody back in here for the administrative report? All right, for those that remain, thank you. Mayor Armando Pavoni will present his state-of-the-city address tomorrow on Tuesday, March 21st, at 6:00 PM at the Renton IKEA Performing Arts Center, located at 400 South Second Street. Doors open at 5:15 PM with light refreshments. Tickets for this free event can be reserved at rentonwa.gov/sotc. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures, and I-405 work happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next is audience comment, but we have nobody signed up, and I believe nobody called in. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right, we're on to consent agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any items that council would like polled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move the council adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council adopt the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee has one committee report.
All right, the Public Safety Committee committee report is regarding amendment to the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team inter-local agreement. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the amendment to the inter-local agreement with Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team, VNET, that addresses the withdrawal of the Port of Seattle Police and the addition of the Washington State Patrol to the agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and one member.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this committee report, the council concur with this committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the public safety report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Councilmember Albersen.
No unfinished, ah, excuse me, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are on to legislation. We have one resolution and one ordinance for adoption.
Hey, the resolution is regarding the ratification of a master contract use agreement. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington ratifying and approving past and future use of a cooperative purchasing agreement titled and numbered Master Contract Usage Agreement, K2127, which was executed on or about July 18th, 2013, between the State of Washington's Department of Enterprise Services and the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Albersen, that the council concur with the resolution as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, next is an ordinance is regarding amending the 2023 salary table. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2023 City of Renton salary table to implement housekeeping changes and an authorized reorganization of the City Clerk Division to add a new position, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council adopt, I move that the ordinance be adopted, read.
Yeah, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albersen, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Is this the second reading?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Second reading requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Albersen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries. We are on to new business. Councilmember, Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March 27th, at 3, excuse me, at 6:00 PM, the Committee of the Hall will be meeting here in chambers as well as via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, and that is the age-friendly Renton. And then at 7:00 PM, we will have our regularly scheduled council meeting here in council chambers. chambers and via video conference. And that is all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one meeting to announce on behalf of Councilmember Prince. The Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Monday, March 27th, at 4:45 PM via video conference and in the council conference room. There are five items on the agenda. First, professional services agreement with Olbrux and Associates, PLLC, for hearing examiner services. Second, planning commission appointment. Third, Docket 18 Group A briefing to include D-226 home occupation. Fourth, conference of plan update, and finally, emerging issues and CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will be meeting on Monday, 27, 2023, at 3:30 PM on, in the council conference room and also via video conference. There are seven items on the agenda. Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Grant and Contract, List with Cascadian 1 LLC, Change Order Number 30 to CAG-20-065 with Re-Drilling and Escavating incorporation for the Duval Avenue Northeast Project, Inspecting Arborist Contract Conversion, 2023 Parks and Recreation Temporary Event Permit Fee waiver request, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but if I could take a point of privilege for us, 30 seconds or so, I'm wanting to thank you for having the special recognition for our Renton Police Department. I know the chief and other folks are not here, but we do have an officer here and just want to thank you for their work, and it's a long time overdue for the recognition. Myself, speaking as even just an individual, not necessarily as Public Safety Chair, Chair of Public Safety, but the work that our officers do every day to support our communities, and I think it's very much appreciated. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Councilmember Alberson.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, let's see here, what's with the council? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss potential property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 sub 1B, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council recess into executive session to discuss potential property acquisition. There'll be no action taken, and we will adjourn immediately after the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, we are off to executive session.